All right, it is six o'clock, so I'm gonna open the board of selectmen's meeting. It's May 31st, and we will, first, I would ask if we can have a motion to waive the meeting under Zoom instructions. We have the motion.
Wait one second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Clark, aye.
Galvin, aye.
Nichols, aye.
Wait one aye.
All right, and we will start with the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right.
We're on a motion of signed treasury warrant, 22W24 payroll, 22PW24.
Wait one second.
Okay, any comments? All right, roll call.
Clark, aye.
Galvin, aye.
Wait one aye.
And Nichols, aye, excluding any C.O.A. wages? All right, next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes.
I make a motion to reapprove minutes from May 16th, 2022.
Okay.
Wait one seconds.
Okay, any comments or corrections? Roll call.
Clark, aye.
Wait one aye.
All right, no, Nichols, aye.
I'm just saying abstain.
Abstain.
Galvin abstain.
Oh yeah, you were here.
Yeah, you were here.
Oh, I'm sorry. This was not given long before, my fault.
Thank you.
You're right, okay, Galvin, aye.
All right.
I would like to put the minutes for May 21st on the next meeting.
Anybody have any objections?
Nope, I think that makes sense, since it was just me skipping Carol.
Yep. All right, so then we will go straight to public comment?
Mr. Chairman, Louis Conneilly, 18 Blueberry Lane, here in the great town of Rutland. A few items I'd like to bring forward. The first one, at the top of Prescott Street, at the square there, I noticed before I went to Florida, and since I've been back from Florida, that the flag at the top of the pole is a very small one. I don't know what the reason it is for, but if it's an issue that finances, I would step forward as a citizen and would be more than happy to purchase the right-sized flag for that flagpole. I think that little flag just demeans the whole purpose of what the flag is supposed to be there for. So unless there's a reason that I'm not aware of, just give me the size that the flag should be, I will get it and hopefully get it to you before the 300th. So that's number one. I'll wait if there's any comments or questions.
Does, um, do you know what the, I mean, I think the flags in the center are too small. I haven't, I haven't seen the one that puts it recently.
If you take a look at the one at the top of Prescott, I have a flagpole, and I believe the, my flagpole is maybe 20 something feet in the air, and my flag at the top, I think, is bigger than the one that's there. And mine's the right size for my pole. So all I'm saying, it just doesn't, it looks out of place, and we're gonna have thousands of people coming to this community for the 300th and our always popular 4th of July, and I just think we should have the appropriate flag. So I'm more than happy to pay for it, I'll turn it off to the DPW, and you guys can hang it up, okay? If you have any problem with it, just give me the right size. I don't wanna get one too big or too small. I wanna be like Goldilocks, get the right size.
I'd, I'd like to review and make sure we have the appropriate sizes on all the comments.
Okay, I've also talked to Mr. Buckley regarding that. Do the, obviously.
Just let me know before the 600th.
The 600th, you got it, though, so.
Mr. Buckley and myself have discussed that.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And thank you for your offer, too.
You're very welcome. Number two, the chief is gonna help me out with number two, so I won't have to address you for that one. It had to do with the, the 300th. Number three, if you've noticed, I spearheaded and with, through the work of Bob Ackerman, a lot of it was while I was in Florida, and so I didn't get to see the final process till I came home, but we put also monument down at Ralph Anderson Square, not just the sign. That did not cost the town of Rutland any money. It was, it was a long process, because I was told that the state owned that. I, I wanna give a cheer to Representative Ferguson and Senator Goby. I contacted both of these wonderful people, two people that really show the rest of the United States how a Republican and Democrat can work and do things the right way. They are terrific combination, the two of them. And they got, they got me through the process with the state, and we were able to put that monument in. So, I don't know if you guys wanna have a second dedication, that's up to you, but I bring it to your attention. Again, it cost the town of Rutland zero dollars, and I think it's a little bit nicer. I would've chosen a different stone, but I wasn't here, I was in Florida, so that's the way the cookie promised, okay?
Did you?
Sure.
You, you never said anything about, to the Select Board about that monument that you put down there, did you?
Yes.
To whom?
To the board.
Well, no, originally, he, he came and he asked about putting it, and we said we had to go to the state.
I came before you guys, and you were the ones that told me.
Yeah, but you didn't say it was gonna be.
You were the ones, Mr. Selectman, that told me.
You, wait a minute!
Just wait one second.
I'm trying to answer your question.
You let me finish.
Sure.
You did not say it was gonna be a cemetery headstone put on the top, down there. That's wrong. That is wrong, wrong. In my eyes, that's wrong.
I would have to somewhat agree with you. Again, I wasn't here.
So you shouldn't have done it till you were here. That's all I can say. That's it. Go ahead, do whatever you want to do.
So you make a remark, you make a remark.
I want everybody to know that I am not happy with it.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, give me a chance. You make a remark, knock me down.
That's all right.
And so I wanna answer you knocking me down.
Go ahead, go ahead.
It's silent? I'll be silent. I'll let the public understand what you just did. That is one of your selectmen, ladies and gentlemen.
That's right.
Okay? Number...
Four.
Let me do, no, no, five was gonna be, I'm gonna move five to four. I am happy to know that we now have a full-time secretary, this young lady right here, who I'd met, I think, once, and I'm glad she's there full-time. One of the problems I've had before I went to Florida, and since I came back from Florida, was talking to a human being in the Selectman Town Administrator's office. I couldn't get hold of, I had to send emails, a number of times, two or three times, I walked into the building, nobody there. Doors open, nobody's there, okay? Couldn't find a soul in the building. When I served as Selectman for the nine years, we always had somebody in the building that would get to walk in traffic or take the phone calls. One of my pet peeves is when you're calling a public agency like us, the town of Rutland, our sole job as the town of Rutland is to take care of the people of the town of Rutland. That's our job. That's what we do. We're a service industry. We, technically, that's what we do. When I was at Selectman, I took phone calls at night, I'm sure you folks do, and I gladly took the phone call, because that's part of the job. My feeling is, when a towns person calls, I wanna talk to the police chief. I should be able to call the police department directly, like we used to do back in the day when I was on the Board of Selectmen. If I wanna talk to the DPW director, I, we used to be able to call right down to the DPW, we talked to the secretary or the administrative assistant, and then got to speak to the, the head of the, the department. People called the Board of Selectmen, the phone call came to us directly, and they, they had someone to talk to, and not a recording, press one, press two, press three, press four. I would like to see us go back to the old system. I don't see why that can't be worked out, so that it'll be minimal cost, so that the people of Rutland, when they call to find something out, are talking to a human being and not to the, the voice of the former town administrator, who I liked very much, by the way. We haven't even updated that. We should get rid of that system and talk to human beings. I addressed that, and I suggest that to you, and take it for what it is. Lastly, on the corner of Glenwood and Campbell, there's a triangular body of tree, there's one tree, an old stone that Addison Redfield had found, and grass. I would like to come forward to this community, again, it will not cost the town of Rutland a dime, it'll all be privately funded, and change that to the Fred and Shirley Warren Square. Now, why them? Because they've been here for an awful long time and have been contributors to this community. Fred taught for years at Wachusett Regional High School. I had the privilege of working with him. We are a farming community. I was on the Board of Selectmen when a group of citizens came before us, the board, and asked us to, to, what the process was, for them to be, for us to be designated a farming community, which we went and did, and we are known as a farming community. Fred taught agriculture for about 40 years at Wachusett, so many of the people, young people, who farmed up here in Rutland, or in Paxton, or, or anyplace sterling, went through his classroom. He also was a Hall of Fame coach for track. His track coach, his track teams were outstanding for years. Shirley, his wife, who's still with us, Fred passed away a couple of years ago, Shirley's still with us, is just a remarkable woman, a stalwart in our community. Again, it will not cost the town of Rutland any money. I understand, the last time I suggested something that has, I was told that there's some kind of a convoluted process. I can't seem to find that process, because there's been, you're the first people I'm addressing since I've come back from Florida to talk about this. I would like to get going on this right away. It will take an ugly area, and we'll beautify it. There'll be the right stone, Mr. Clark. I concur with you on that. There will be the right stone. It won't cost the town any money. That ugly pine tree, which is half-dead, will come down and be disposed of, and the lawn will keep, will be kept clean and neat, and again, it's not gonna be a dime to this community. And we are, and I think we should be doing this throughout this community, paying tribute to those citizens. I'm glad to see that right up here in our common, we're having a bandstand erected, and it's gonna be dedicated to a, to a man who gave tons of his time to this community and effort. I'm glad that we're doing that. There are a number of people that I would suggest that we honor, like, just off the top of my head, the Allenobi Brothers, stalwarts in this community. But I digress. So, how do I go about?
Um, were we, were we able to find the policy?
How do I go about to get this square done?
Gary, were you able to find the policy?
I did not find the policy, no, sir.
Okay.
I, I, I did locate the policy.
Okay.
That the board created a few months ago, and it has to go through the Select Board, the Historical Commission, and town meeting.
Okay.
And can I ask a question? Because I remember I got an answer to this last time, but that, you know, I'm almost 80 years old. This August, I'll be 80. So I'm getting up there in age, and the brain isn't what it used to be. Why this convoluted process? You are the governing board, five of you. When I was a Selectman, there's only three of us. You've got two more bodies to think about things. Why do we have to go to a town meeting? Why do we have to go before the Historical Commission? Why can't you folks make that single decision? It's just mind-boggling to me. So, I heard the three steps. Board of Selectmen, Historical Commission, Town Meeting. Unbelievable. How many, how many signatures does it take to run a special town meeting?
Special town meeting?
Does anybody know that?
No, I know it costs a lot of money, I'm not sure what the money's.
I'm not caring about the money. I wanna know how many people. Then I'll care about the money once I'm told how many people.
You were a Selectman, do you know?
Is it 10?
10 is for if, if you wanna put something on it.
So in other words, if I got a petition, because if I have to wait for a town meeting, the next scheduled town meeting is in October. October. So we're wasting the whole summer when this job could be done. So, I could run a special town meeting just to, just to deal with this, but I certainly don't wanna do that. Why do we have to go through this convoluted process? When you are the governing fathers and daughters of this community, mothers of this community, and you're the ones that should be making that decision.
I, I think this board made the decision and have the policy.
Well, you can always undo that decision.
Right, but we made that decision, so we have the right to.
Have you thought about how convoluted it is? Is it because you don't want people to do things?
No, we feel that people, it, it should go through the town, it should be a town decision, it's, it's owned by the community.
And who are you folks, you're the town.
Well, we think the community should have input, and that's the way the board felt.
Really?
Yep.
So, how do I start this? Is this, does this number one now? And then I contact Historical Commission, who are they? Where do I find them?
So you have the base, to me, okay, you have the base, the policy that was written up?
Yes.
Okay, so you could get that to Mr. Conneilly.
Okay. And so, as we look at stand right now, it looks like the next town meeting's in October, correct?
At this point. We haven't scheduled anything.
And while, could I ask that whilst the policy's being researched, I will also be given the information as to how many signatures I need to put on a petition to hold a special town meeting?
Can you get that from Anita and get that to Mr.?
And also, I would like to know the exact cost of the, of a special town meeting. I assume we have to pay for the police, and you don't need your lawyer. You don't need your lawyer. We've had town meetings without the lawyer, so it is a major saving, especially with that high, high-end Boston burn you have. What would be the other expense? We own the buildings. Custodian?
It depends on what the time of the day.
We own the buildings, we built the schools.
We might own it, but we don't own it.
But it'd be in the summer, so they're gonna have to open it.
We built, we built the schools.
So, it, it won't be during school, so you have to open them.
Of course, it'll be at night.
Right.
We do it on the weekend. So I, I would like a cost, because if the cost is not that much, I'd be more than happy to raise the money. I don't wanna wait till October.
So we would get that, get that from Anita.
It's a waste of time, and it's usually late October that we do it. We usually have the meeting late October, correct? End of October when we have the special town meeting?
Correct, most, well.
So now we're talking, by the time that gets voted on, we're in November. It'd be tough to get that thing, work done, when we, we're wasting a whole summer. When can I, I, when would you have that information for me?
I can get that for you tomorrow.
Okay, good.
The policy, um, we would just, Gary and I would have to talk to Anita about the special town meeting, 'cause she probably wouldn't know that information.
Okay, so if I come up in the afternoon?
Yeah, you can.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, have a nice night.
Thank you. Any other public comment? So we're going to go to the public, the public hearing, I'm gonna open it for the National Grid pole installation at Turkey Hill Road. This is, do you have anything on this, Gary, as far as it's just a poll hearing?
And then there should be somebody on Zoom from National Grid. I'm not sure if that's Rebecca.
Was that, I don't see anybody.
Is that the name there?
Hi.
Rebecca?
Rebecca, yes, Rebecca Marks, National Grid. It's not much, we just need to install a midspan pole, the distance of the poles right now on Turkey Hill Road are over 250 feet, with a couple new houses being built, so in order to secure and properly guide all the poles, we just need to add a midspan pole and add an anchor.
Okay. Does anybody on the board have any questions?
We have, Joe Buckley's here and has been dealing with the, the pole installation now. Joe, any comment on the location of the pole, or any requirements as far as off-streets edge?
Couple quick things before I forget. We originally asked to have this hearing canceled, because National Grid failed, failed to remove a guide wire from a tree on Maple Ave that stalled our construction for approximately a month and a half. They've since removed the guide wire last week, and we're able to get the project started again. Thank you for that. I did go to the field and look at the pole location. Is it as staked as it is now?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay. The location is fine, the only thing is, we wanna maintain four, three to four feet off the paved edge for snow. If you could make sure that happens, that'd be great.
Yep, will do.
Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize for that guide wire. Sometimes there's a lot of misconfusion, and, you know, I can personally, if you'd like, I can, you can, I can give you my phone number, and I take care of all the Brook, Brookfields in Rutland and all that, I can kinda get a hold of the overhead guys a little bit better, and that can help you out with things like that.
That'd be great, 'cause we have one on the common that's in the way that bandstand, so.
Okay, okay. Do you wanna take my number down now?
No, you can just email it.
Okay, do you have an email?
Yep, it's jaybuckley@townofrutland.org.
Buckley, could you spell that, so I make sure I get it right?
B-U-C-K-L-E-Y, and it's townofrutland, all one word, dot org.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
It's Leah, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Did, did I hear that there's gonna be a guide wire on this new pole? I just wanted to make sure that the guide wire, Joe, you had looked where the guide wire was going and everything, and that's all set as well?
No, that, I'm sorry.
It's just nothing, anchor.
The guide wire issue was on another road, it was on Maple. This will be a standard one.
No, no, I understand, I understand that. I thought I over, I thought, maybe I misunderstood the National Grid rep saying that they were wanting to be a guide wire for the poles they're installing on Turkey Hill. Did I misunderstand?
A down, down anchor.
Okay. Okay, is the anchor, Joe, had you had a chance to look at the anchors? The anchors are the ones that go straight down to the ground, is that correct?
Yeah, it goes behind the pole into the ground. It's not like one that goes from across the street or to the, to a tree or anything like that. It just goes behind.
It's all within the right of way, Leah, I think it's fine, and National Grid doesn't, whenever possible, tie guide wires to trees anymore. It's, it's a leftover problem.
Correct, we, we try to remove them at all costs now, 'cause it does kill the trees.
You all set, Leah?
Yeah, sorry, I'm all set. I just, yeah, I just wanted that clarification, thank you.
Okay. If I can get a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
The second?
Second.
All right, roll call?
Clark, aye.
Galvin, aye.
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye. And now if I can get a motion on approval of the pole?
So moved. Second.
All right, any further discussion? Roll call?
Clark, aye.
Galvin, aye.
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
You, too. All right, next up is department head updates. We have Chief Mark.
Good evening.
Good to see you.
So, coming up to the end of May, Memorial Day, it's been pretty busy, as, as usual, with the warm weather, the fall volumes that's kicked up. Administratively, I've also been very busy with trying to meet up with the new requirements of the police reform bill. There's a lot of paperwork, a lot of documents, forms, spreadsheets, and just trying to make sure that everybody is within the requirements for the new post-certifications. We got one part-time officer that's just about finished with the Bridge Academy process, so a couple more paperwork items with him, and he'll be all set. And the state actually is, they put out a Bridge Academy grant, so any part-time officer that we've sent to the Bridge Academy, we can get reimbursed $3,000 to recoup some of that money. Guys have been busy doing the traffic grant. It's a continuous process throughout the year. May was distracted driving mobilization, and June begins a speeding mobilization. August, and then I think the next one's in August with a impaired driving mobilization. We had applied for that Boddy Cameron grant and got it several months ago. The equipment has all been delivered, and starting next month, we're gonna start training all the officers for a expected deployment date of July 1st. Talk about staffing a little bit. I lost another part-time officer, so effective July 1st, I'm only going to have four part-time officers compared to the seven that I had at this time last year. Contractually, part-time officers are all required to work three shifts a month, so you can do the math, that's nine shifts a month right there, and a minimum of 108 shifts a year that we're gonna be missing out on coverage from part-time guys. And like I said, that's just the minimum. Contractually obligated to work three shifts a month, most of them work four or five, so you can think of how many shifts that, that covers. The attraction isn't quite there to be a part-time officer anymore, because, because of all these requirements now, we're not gonna be able to hire any more part-time officers, because the part-time academy no longer exists. That's the whole thing with the, the Bridge Academy. And now anybody that does complete the Bridge Academy, there's really no incentive to remain a part-time officer, because they can go get a full-time job somewhere else. So, you're gonna see in the future, our reliance on part-time staff is gonna be dwindling down. So I just wanna put it on your radar, I think now's the time to start thinking about, talking about, with, with the loss of the part-time staff, you know, maybe adding another full-time guy sometime next year. Community events, we have the five, the K-9 5K this Saturday, the Glenwood School at 11 o'clock, so anybody wants to come, please come, it's gonna be a good time. We're gonna have the off-the-hook roadside eatery food truck, and Seven Saws will be there to provide beverages, and there'll be some K-9 demonstrations and everything. What else do we got? We're meeting tomorrow with representatives from the 300th and the 4th of July Committee to solidify traffic safety and security plans for all the upcoming events, including the muster, and obviously the 4th, 4th of July events. School safety, so horrific events in the country last week. We kinda upped our presence and visibility at all the schools last week. I had officers there, little extra dur and drop-off and pick-up times, and extra presence during some special events in the aquag. They had their spring concerts and literacy parade, so we made sure we had some extra bodies there. And finally, just about my budget, my budget is completely expended. All my expense accounts are empty, as well as the overtime account. The only thing keeping us operating is the ARPA money that's reimbursing us for all the overtime we paid out for COVID, and there's insurance reimbursement money that we got back from the insurance company when we had a guy out for an extended COVID leave. And then expense-wise, we're being carried through by Deveraux donation money, so.
So is that gonna carry you through the month?
That, that'll get me through the month, yes. And then that insurance money will get the, the wages and overtime to the end of the month, too, so.
And, and then some of the 300th will pay for some, whatever they need, right? They'll help the expenses.
Yeah, the, the, that money in the article will pay for police details for, for those events.
And is it, are you gonna be able to get the details without the part-time help and stuff like that?
We're gonna do our best, so may have to reach outside of town, but we'll, we'll have it covered. Any other questions?
It's Leah, if I may.
Yep, go ahead, Leah.
Chief, thank you first of all for your update, and to the whole department for kind of being such a presence, especially the, you know, always, but especially for the past couple weeks with all the, the horrific stuff that's been going on, I appreciate that. And it was nice to see somebody out yesterday at the Memorial Day Parade and everything, so thank you, and thank your department for their community involvement. I think one thing that we as a board needs to be mindful of is the, without being able to rely on part-timers, we're going to be paying overtime, I would imagine, and that's generally more costly than the part-time salaries, I would imagine. Correct me if I'm wrong. So I think budget-wise, we've heard that it's May, and the chief has depleted his budget as stands now, and that's with being able to utilize part-timers and everything. So we're going to have to really look into how we can fund a, an appropriately staffed So we're going to have to really look into how we can fund a appropriately staffed police department because I think we all agree that, um, having safe, safe policing numbers is important for the safety of everybody.
Yeah, if I could just add on, on the overtime, for instance, that, that was bare minimum overtime solely calculated on vacation time and personal time. There's no cushion for an emergency. This is, it's an emergency department that runs 24/7. There's absolutely no cushion built in for major events, major disasters, long-term illnesses. So, I mean, it's just, we're completely fortunate that we got that insurance money and that we got the ARPA money to cover it. Because if something else happened, there's nothing yet covered, so.
So when it was budget, where's your biggest shortfall? Did you see that, I mean, it was off a whole month? I mean, based on what you, I know the budgets, budgets have been cut, but...
Right, it's, it's mostly because of COVID absences.
Okay.
So that, that is the majority of it. So COVID absences that were covered by ARPA and then a long, a singular long-term COVID absence that was reimbursed by insurance.
Anybody else have anything for the chief? As always, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
We appreciate all you do, your hard work and your men. And sorry about the shortfall, it's just, that's pretty scary. I don't know how we'll, we'll look at it going forward. Hopefully COVID will be coming to an end someday, so the next year we won't have those kind of issues going on, but. All right. Thank you. And then we will go to Safe Place, so there we go.
Um, well, we have 11 and a half days in what has been a very different school year for us this year. Started off with full COVID restrictions and just a different way of life for us operating over there, but we kind of were able to adapt to everything and life went back to normal, mostly in the schools in February when they lifted mask mandates and all that. Staff were great, parents were great, the kids were great, so that made it a little bit easier. We were very short-staffed at the beginning of the year. We had staff not return to work this year, others that were just not comfortable being in the schools with the kids. So the beginning of the year was a little rough, but probably by February, we were at our normal 12 staff, six at each school, so that was a little easier. We are gonna lose three in June. They're graduating high school, going on to college, so I will be looking to replace those three positions. Registration for this coming year will start June 20th. We're gonna go back to our pre-COVID hours of opening at 7:00. We did not do that this year and that was a burden on a lot of parents, opening at 7:30, but with so many restrictions in place and not really knowing what was gonna happen, we went with the 7:30 opening, so I think that'll be better for families in town.
How, how long is the registration, is it?
So we'll open at June 20th and it's kind of ongoing. We were never really at 100% capacity. Pre-COVID, we used to operate at like 90%, which was good. It gave us some wiggle room to have kids like drop in here and there when a parent randomly needed it. This past year, we were at like 70, I think a lot of families...
What is, what would 100% be, how many kids?
104 kids at any given time. We have more than that registered because not all of them are in care every day at the same time.
Thank you.
Um, the biggest thing this year for us was grants. Um, the Department of Early Education has put out tons of funding this year. We received $88,000 in ARPA funds to specifically be used for Clubhouse and Safe Place. At the beginning, we could only use it for certain things and then in March, they opened it that we can pretty much use it for anything not capital-related. So we did give some staff bonuses, because all my staff that were off for a year and a half, they were not able to collect unemployment because they also worked for the district and they were getting paid by them. So we did that, we replaced some equipment, some materials, but not having our own building, our own space to put the money into, it makes it a little difficult. We can't go in and like change things at Naqog or Glenwood or to put the money in there where it's not really ours to be able to use whenever we want, it's hard. So we're kind of trying to figure out what we can do with it. We don't have to expend it by any particular date, so that's good. We can hold on to the money for now and see, but we need space. We need to, I can't run programs on half-days, I can't run programs over our school vacation weeks or anything like that, and we don't have anywhere to go where we can do that. So that's making it tricky. And I know the families in this town, we parents every year, do you have half-day programs? Do you have anything on Christmas, April, February vacation? And we don't. We can't use the schools on half-days because they're in there for professional development. The hot, the school vacation weeks, it's very minimal of us getting in there. Usually the janitors are off, there's nobody in the buildings on those weeks, so.
And do you use all three schools or just two schools?
Just Naqog and Glenwood, not Central Tree. If families that are at Central Tree want to utilize before and after school, they can. The district will bus the kids to Glenwood, but usually by the time they're in sixth grade, they don't want to be at before and after school.
Now, Clubhouse, is that, what's the difference between that, what's Clubhouse?
It's the same exact program, it's just Safe Place specifically runs out at Naqog and Clubhouse runs out of Glenwood. That's the only difference. It's just different age group of kids. So we received the ARPA grant, we also received what was called an operational grant. We received $5,600. It was a percent of how many kids in the program are on a subsidy slot that's paid for by the state. We have four of them, so it's not a huge amount of money, but we received that back just due to all the COVID protocols we had to follow and paperwork that ensued. Anytime there was like COVID case and we had to report everything to the Department of Ed, so every little bit helps.
Now, I thought in the past that you could only keep a certain amount of money and then you have to put it back in and lower your tuitions and stuff, is that still the case, or?
I believe so. We have not increased tuition at all since I've been here and I started here in 2017. We've been able to maintain the exact same fee, still serve breakfast and lunch and all that, or snacks and stuff to the kids. We usually have a carryover every year that gets expended when we purchase new stuff for the upcoming school year, but I mean, this grant obviously puts us into a different situation.
But I didn't know if there was a number, was there a number, Karen, that they used to, you just have to watch that they had to not be above a certain threshold?
We hadn't come anywhere near close to that, as I recall.
Yeah, I don't think so either, because I think Dan would have given us a heads up or something.
I was gonna say, I remember here and once upon a time, and we've never come close, so. But she's always done very well at maintaining her revolving funds.
I was just curious, especially with the big, the big ones. Anybody have any questions? Leah, do you have any questions for Sarah?
I was just gonna say, it's Leah, if I may.
Yeah.
Um, Sarah, thank you for the update and for all the work that you and all of Safe Place have been doing for, throughout the year. I know it's been a crazy couple years and so, um, kind of finishing out this year, hopefully on a high-ish note is, is nice.
Yeah.
And I think we hear the echo, you know, we heard it a couple weeks ago from Council on Aging, we hear it from Safe Place and we hear it from Recreation, that we really need more indoor space activity-wise for, um, the populations that, that town serves across the board. So, um, again, I think this is just for us as a board and the community as a whole to understand that this space problem isn't going away. We're almost at 10,000 residents now and that number is just going to continue to grow. Um, and all, all agents deserve space to be able to participate in the activities and then you could be better set up to utilize some of the funds that you have because you can buy merchandise or equipment that could be housed where you're doing your activities rather than trying to stuff it in a storage container or a tiny closet or something. So again, I, I take that space comment to heart and, um, hopefully we can get more, more of the town on board to come up with a, a true solution for that.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. Like right now, all of Karina's stuff is basically in the basement of the town hall. My stuff is still at the schools. We'll get out of school at 12:30 on the 16th and we'll spend the next two days taking all my stuff out, put her stuff in and whatever doesn't fit over there, we'll stay in those storage pods. And it, it's just not doable. We can't get into them, they're 100 degrees in the summer for staff to be going in and out of. They're not on-site where we need, where we need it to be, so it just doesn't work.
And before, now, you, you used to use the basement of town hall, you still, you still use that? Do you use that or just Recreation uses that space?
Um, just Recreation usually. It's just the last two weeks of camp because we have to be out of Naqog. I believe it's like the 6th this year, so they can get it ready for school, get the floors done and hold all their staff meetings. So then we, the last two weeks of camp are over there. We also lose out financially because we go from having 88 kids a day to 35 over there, which is just a loss for her.
So Safe Place runs a camp?
No, Recreation runs the camp, Karina. The Rec Department runs the camp.
So that's, that's Recreation, that's not you?
Right, no.
But do you work the camp?
No.
I think the confusion is just, if I, if I may, the storage kind of is shared between Safe Place and Recreation.
Correct.
And so it's shuttling Recreation's stuff quickly over to the schools for camp as soon as school closes and then quickly getting Safe Place's stuff back into the schools before, right before school starts. So, um, it's that, that storage slash shuttling piece, I think.
Yes, exactly.
And that's, but Recreation can put their stuff at the schools?
In the summer, I'll take my stuff out, all of Safe Place's stuff out. Karina will put most of her stuff over for summer fun and then those last two weeks of camp, she'll bring it all back over to the basement of the town hall along with 35 kids, which is, you can imagine, really fun to be squished into that little basement for two weeks. And then I'll bring all my stuff back before school opens at the end of August. This year, I had to use the pool house because the schools, we lost space at the schools. They were using it for all like the PPE for everything, so I had to use the pool house all winter for all of our food, all of our dry goods. So that was always fun in like the middle of February, trucking down there and unloading stuff to bring over.
So during the summer, do you run any programs?
No, so I close out the previous year and register for the upcoming year. So I'm just in the office all summer, I'm not on-site.
So, so you, that, you're just in the office registering all summer long?
Yes, yeah. Yep.
Do you have any, anything else, Leah, or?
Um, no, I just, um, sorry, Sarah, I think there's also a requirement for, or, um, through the Department of Early Ed to maintain staffing year-round, right? To, um, maintain your credentials. So is that part of the reason that you're kind of, um, still available and on-site and, and registering and doing some odds and ends and everything?
Yeah, so a school, a school-age program that operates for just the school year has to have a full-time admin or director. And there's also no way that I could not work in the summer and then like two weeks before school, get everything ready for an entire year. I mean, the amount of paperwork to get each child registered, any kids that have any medical issues, I have to have documentation on-site. We do our first aid, our CPR, all that training in the summer, professional development that has to be done. That's when I handle hiring any new staff, doing all of our background record checks. I do that in the summer because that all has to be ready to go, ordering stuff to be on-site for August 28th or whatever the first day of school is.
So does all your staff have to do CPR, first aid?
Yes, we all have to be first aid and CPR certified, yes.
Anybody have anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming, thank you for all you do.
Have a good night.
You too. All right. And go to the town administrators update.
Well, yes, sir, a couple of things. As discussed at last meeting, I did contact the Division of Standards for the Sealer of Weights and Measures. Very nice conversation, very informative. I did sign the agreement for the price stated, which was roughly $2,500. These inspections, weights and measures are done on an annual basis, expiring December 31st. These will all be done prior to obviously the end of the year and Anita has my signed copy of the agreement and we're waiting on Mr. James Cassidy, who signed his portion of the agreement, to get it back to me so we can start this.
So they'll all do it the month of June, they'll do them all?
No, they'll do them all, they have the remainder of the calendar year to finish them.
Oh, it's the calendar year, I'm sorry.
This was just, it was late getting this started, so we just kind of moved it through and asked questions.
Okay.
Okay? Also, I talked to Mr. Evan Marshall from Division of Department of Labor Standards because it was found out recently that the, the work on the wood, on the woodhouse that I've been talking to, Mr. Buckley about, um, had expired. So we had to fill out, get some facts and figures for a corrective accident form, which I sent into them and they responded back and have indeed gave it, given us another extension. So as I've talked to, to Joe about this, we've talked about this several times in the past week. That's being worked on, we have till July 1st of 2022 to complete the work and that, that entails a railing for out front and the attic access or fold-out access.
It's a railing around the top of the attic.
Oh, around, around the doorway, you mean, like the entrance?
If you weren't in the attic, it's a railing to prevent you from falling down, basically down through the hole again.
Right.
So.
So that's, I believe you said Thursday, somebody's coming there to, to, to give us the final scope and so we can move and get that done and get that one closed out. Okay?
Yep.
I have a question, sorry.
Yeah.
I have a question about that. Is this, this isn't the, um, state grant money that Kim and Ann had gotten for us for the roof? This is the insurance money from the, from the attic situation?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Um, as stated, yeah, Tamika did send in that paperwork for the second portion of the reimbursement of the $25,000 for the 12-5, so we should be getting that money back shortly for that. And that was for the roof, Leah. Okay?
Yep, thank you, I got that, thank you.
Okay. Also, as talked about the last meeting, regarding the applications for the administrative assistant, I have copies of those and Leah, I'm sorry, hi Leah. Tamika and I will be going over those and we'll begin making appointments to have them come in for an interview starting on Thursday to see what we can line up for appointments. Out of the 11 that we received, I picked out seven and I'm just gonna ask Tamika's assistant to take a look over them, see if she agrees and also any member of the board that wants to see what we have.
And how many hours is that, is that gonna be at this point?
That's gonna be an additional part-time, so it's gonna make up the difference for when Tamika is not there. So hopefully, as Louis has stated, we'll have some, um, full-time between the two, the two folks, a full-time staff.
But do you know how many hours approximately?
I don't know, I'm waiting for some facts and figures from Tamika for her availability other than what she has now, but we will have those numbers.
But that, that will provide us with the daily coverage for phones and such, right? Thank you.
Okay?
Yep.
And I do have, although it's not on the agenda for a voting item, but I do have, I do have two appropriation transfers for signatures by the board before it's forwarded up to finance. So I don't know if you can approve those, vote on it, make a motion, sign, or if we have to move this to the next meeting.
So Skip, take a look at them. One is to pay the balance off for town administrator coverage wages, right? Which we had talked to Dan, these will be the last two that Dan will send in ever again. And I'm not sure what the other one was, Skip, I didn't understand what that one was.
Bay Path, additional assessment for Bay Path.
Oh, it's Bay Path, okay, okay.
It's a nice letter from Irene that's attached, that explains exactly what it's for.
So you guys are aware of that, both of these probably?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, it's...
I'll make the motion to sign appropriation transfer signatures.
For both, or?
For both, for, uh, town administrator salary and locational assessment.
Second, second. Any discussion?
Where was it coming from, sorry?
Dan, what do you think? This was money that you didn't expect, right? Karen?
How?
The funds, that was, this is money that Dan hadn't expected that he transferred over for the, cover these expenses, I thought. I had talked to him originally when we talked about the money.
Yeah, it says state assessments, so I assumed it was additional.
Yes.
Revenue raised.
There was an oops that occurred in state assessments.
And I think we discussed that during the transition.
Okay, that's fine.
All right. Everybody good with it? If I can get a roll call?
Clark eye. Galvin eye.
Whitman eye.
And we can sign. Well, actually, um, I have those, I'm sorry. All right, um, next, we have no old business. Uh, new business appointment to Board of Registra's Michael Panto Senior, three-year term expiring April 2025.
I'd like to make a motion, Michael Panto Senior for, uh, three-year.
And we have the letter and the information that Tamika received and wants to look at it. Do we have a second?
Whitman seconds.
Any discussion?
Oh, just for, the Board of Registra's is the election, right? So if there's, um, this kind of election certification and overview of, I mean, okay.
Any other questions or discussion?
Clark eye. Galvin eye.
Whitman eye.
And Nichols eye. I don't have to sign anything on that one. All right, next, appointment of economic development... All right, next, appointment of Economic Development Commission, Grace. Ma, ma, how would you say that?
Not sure.
M, Mabaya, Mabaya? Oh, I'm sorry. Was she here? She was, I think she's.
She's here, but I just stepped out. Yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay. Um it's a two-year term expiring in twenty-twenty-four. And we do have the information and Grace as well.
I'll make the motion, appoint her. I wish she was still here to.
I feel bad. Um do we have a second?
Waitman seconds.
Any discussion?
Is it, no, this is the commission that handles the heights of the place.
No, 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 this, this is just um developing business in town. This is a group meeting, yep.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
All right, any other discussion? Roll call?
Clock eye. Galvanite.
Waitman eye.
And Nicholas eye. All right. Wachusett Regional School District Municipal Representative nominate two representatives to participate in the school committee collective bargaining. Did they ask for two, Gary?
No, I thought they.
Oh, town, I'm sorry, town, it's not two. So I don't know if people saw the email. Um do you have the email on this? This is just to uh have somebody from the town to represent us during the election to have somebody for collective bargaining. Everybody should have a copy of that. I know I read it, but I don't know if they have a chance to find it. Did you see it? So this is anyway, like I said, we just need somebody from the board that, I think it's one meeting, Tamika, is that correct?
Uh, yes.
Twenty-nine?
No, I think it was June fifteenth.
Oh, I'm sorry. So June fifteenth.
I think the June, oh, sorry. Oh, this is for the, um, yeah, sorry, never mind. Yeah, yeah, it's June fifteen.
It is.
And it's a virtual meeting?
Yes.
Does anybody have any interest in participating? Leah, do you have any interest in participating?
Nominate Leah.
I want to make sure people.
Oh, Carol, boy, that's pretty easy.
Carol's not here, so it's, that's, that's usually the risk you take when you don't come to a meeting. Do you have any interest, Leah?
I mean, I don't have a ton of it. I mean, I can do it. I don't have a ton of interest. Um it's, you know, I'm not being feeling like I have to do it, but I can do it if.
I don't see anybody fighting to do it. We can always just nominate Carol while she's not here, but if you'd like to just.
So I mean, I can do it because it's to, um.
I think it's only a one night, isn't it?
It's just a one morning thing.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's the other thing. It's during the day. That was the other concern.
So it's a, it's a virtual meeting in the morning. I can do it because.
You sure? You're okay with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so it's been, I've motioned, do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Clock eye. Galvanite.
Waitman eye.
And Nicholas eye. Thank you. Ah, Juneteenth federal holiday. Vote to mark the celebration of federal holiday on June nineteenth, but it actually is celebrated on the twentieth. The nineteenth is a Sunday, so it falls to the Monday. So the help, the celebration is of June nineteenth, but the federal holiday will be on the twentieth.
I, and maybe Gary can clarify. I don't know if it's specifically, like if this is something we have to do every year or this is just a general declaration of.
I'm hoping we can just declare that we acknowledge it as a, it's a federal and a state holiday. And I think as a community, we just need to say that we as a community will acknowledge it as well. And I'm hoping it's not something we do every year. It's either we decide it's a holiday or not.
No, um as you know, if I may, I'm to the chair. Um last year on the eighteenth of June, both the feds and the state did recognize this as a legal holiday. Last year in the town of Brotland, um only, only full-time employees who normally worked that day of the, of the holiday were given the day off. So my recommendation to the board, because it does have to be approved by the municipality to honor that as a, as a state or municipality.
It has to go to town vote?
It just goes to the Board of Slaughter.
On the board, okay.
So my, my recommendation tonight was that the board recognize this as a, um, as a recognized holiday and enter it into the policy with, along with the list of holidays. So and I know you said, um, Mr. Chair, that it was gonna be on Monday this year, but obviously every year it's gonna, it's gonna change, so.
All right. Do we have any, uh, anything, someone want to make a motion regarding recognition of Juneteenth as a politics for the.
I'll make a motion to let the town recognize um Juneteenth, the federal holiday, as a, a local holiday as well.
Second.
Any discussion?
I might state that this will be the, other than it falling on a Saturday or Sunday, it would be the actual day of the holiday.
Right.
So, okay.
Yeah, the week, just the same as any federal holiday, always falls to the Monday if it's a weekend.
Yeah, and this goes into, um would update our contracts and policies and everything for a paid holiday.
Correct, we'd have to update that, yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Uh roll call?
Clock eye. Galvanite.
Waitman eye.
Nicholas eye. Negotiations with Charter Spectrum designate individuals to negotiate for cable TV licensing agreement. Would say that this typically be something the town administrator would handle?
No, we've never had that before.
Really?
Ours has been the Cable Committee.
Oh, the Cable Committee does the negotiation itself?
Oh, that, yes. And then that's how it's always been. It was just I've been on board.
By my, I'll give you a little bit of background on what's, what's happening so far. This goes back actually ten years when we were negotiating the contract to begin with that we're currently operating on. And because we're in the process of doing this area, um there were some negotiations regarding finance and they had to go back and forth between Charter St. Louis at that time and Charter Worcester. And so as it turned out, um the contract that we put together um actually became effective on January first, uh, two thousand and fourteen. So basically, we have a contract that runs until twenty-twenty-four. Um the thing that um became a little bit confusing here, and I've been trying to get it straightened out with Charter but haven't had a awful lot of luck so far, but I keep working on it. And um on October fifteenth last year, um the state forwarded to the town a document saying that, you know, the town was due for uh contract renewal. And so, all right, so that was addressed to the town administrator and um it stayed with the town administrator. And on December twenty-second, Charter formally sent a request to the town um seeking um information on contract renewal and and giving us information on the types of contract discussions that could be had and so on and so forth. Um this was also addressed to the town administrator. And so um this is what happened. Um finally, on April twelfth this year, um the acting town administrator sent me an email saying he had all this information from Charter and what should I do with it? So, okay, so I have started trying to contact Charter and make some, some sort of an agreement here to get started on some things. In other words, we've, we've lost um some time with preliminaries and so on and so forth. And I'll, I'll save the board the whole explanation of everything that goes down. Um at this particular point in time, um in, what, the past twenty years that I've negotiated contracts with Charter? Well, that's a long time. Anyways, um we have come to the point of where, okay, um there are steps that uh happen in the beginning and we move then into the actual contract or construction and so on and so forth. So what has happened is that basically I've lost four months here and this, I'm trying to come to some sort of an agreement here with Charter to find out just where, exactly where we stand. And at this point in time, I have not been able to do so. Um I've emailed them twice and I phone called them this morning. And as of five fifteen today, I had not received any reply either from emails or from phone call. So in order to get things to a point of where the Cable Committee will, in the future, be um the contact party for Charter or Spectrum Communications, whichever you prefer to call them. Um we kind of, at the last Cable Committee meeting, had a discussion about this. And so Peter has put together some ideas here for what we can do and so he might just.
Sure. So in brief, or as brief as I know how to be, I know Gary. This is technically not a contract. This is a license. This is a license for Spectrum. Well, right now, we have a single provider, Spectrum Communications, to provide cable television services to the town. And so every ten years, we negotiate a ten-year life, ten-year license with as many companies as we can get interested. We've only ever had Spectrum previously Charter interested. I would expect that we would be, oh, you, the select board, are technically the licensing authority for the town. And that would not leave your authority. This is merely the negotiation of this license. We would work with the town administrator to make sure everything's being done. Uh it is certain that we will employ special counsel, not KP Law, because generally speaking, the it's, it's generally said that there are four or five attorneys who know this particular set of law. And we were given the name of one of those attorneys from the people in Holden, who are actually two years without a contract so far. And they're still going, but they at least have an attorney that, that is well-known in the field that we would expect to use in place of KP Law for helping in the, in the formation and negotiations as well.
So did KP, KP Law say that they don't have the appropriate?
They did not say that. These are words we got actually from, the previous town administrator said point-blank in a finance committee meeting, there are only four or five attorneys in the state to do this.
Because we, I mean, we have, we contract with them. Are we able to get special counsel outside of them without first checking with them to see if they, something that they can?
It's my understanding you have the authority to do, to do, to employ special counsel anytime, anytime.
Or that contract allows that?
Yeah, we used to do that when there was
Historically.
Guy Barry and Coke on the page, we, we did that.
I just want to make sure because there was questions in the past that we not.
Historically, it's gone between the committee and Charter or Charter Spectrum or whatever, okay? So in other words, we've all sat down and, and discussed the finer points of a contract, come to an agreement on a contract, um reviewed by town legal counsel and approved, and the contract was then signed and, and put into effect, okay? So now it appears that Charter, for some reason, has changed the rules, except that their um introductory letters and so on and so forth are basically the same that I've received the last twenty years from Charter. So as it stands right now, I just kind of think that, okay, you know, if we need to use an attorney, we need to use an attorney. I have, I had a discussion with the attorney, but I have not agreed to any um to use the attorney in any manner, shape, or form at this point in time. Um, you know, I'm hoping that Charter might respond, but they don't seem to be responding. But I will give it another, another week or so, and if they don't respond, then, you know, we'll contact the attorney and see see what, see what's gonna happen with that.
So as far as paying for the special counsel, does that come out of your budget?
It, it does. In fact, we have a special line item in this year's upcoming budget to, to, to pay for it.
Okay.
To pay for a legal counsel, whichever service we use.
And my previous comment was just to make sure there's no breach of contract.
To my understanding, there is not a breach there.
Okay.
The other thing I wanted to point out is this is an eighteen-to-twenty-four month process. This is not a short term. This is not a fast, just look at a contract and sign it. This is, we have to look at everything we want for services for the town and negotiate each of those things with, and then there's, there's public input. There's a survey that we'll probably have to do. There's, there's a lot going into this, so this is not something you're going to hear that we're done in three months.
Okay, that's for the chair. Now Charter's the only show in town, right? I mean, there's no other options?
Charter has been the only company that's expressed interest in doing business with us so far. And that has to do with the way that all the cable companies carved over the state some number of years ago.
But there's no FiOS options, there's no, not in this town.
There has not been to date, and I've heard that there'll never be another FiOS installation in the town, anywhere.
Right.
Last time we did a contract, I sent letters of, uh, approach to Comcast, Verizon and AT&amp;T, okay, to see about, and we received no replies.
Well, I don't think Comcast is anywhere in this area, right?
No, Comcast won't be here, but there could be in RCN, AT&amp;T again could be. We will be sending out letters, you know, letters of interest to see, again, that's part of our process to make sure that, that we have the strongest negotiating position.
If I may, to piggyback on kind of what Tom was just saying, um, are there other, we know Holden is in negotiations and I, are there other communities or larger cities in the area that are also coming up for negotiations or in negotiations that might have some more power to um entice a, an alternate provider? You know, if there's a, a more regional effort?
I have, I haven't seen that any of the region, that any of the uh other, none of the big four, I think they are, uh, other than the big four or so. I haven't seen anything that, that will draw. I, I haven't seen any, I haven't seen an RCN drawn to Worcester, for example.
So that was a, a little bit, I guess, what I was leading towards is if there's a concerted effort within Central Mass to, or within the region to outreach to an alternate provider or providers, would, would that potentially entice any? And is it worth reaching out to other communities to see if there's any? I, I think the frustration that we all experienced having a single provider is felt throughout the entire region. And so I don't know if having, you know, that power and numbers is beneficial at all.
Okay, there would, there would be a negotiation between Charter and any company that is interested in taking over, okay? So in other words, you know, everything that's in the town right now belongs to Charter. And so it would essentially have to be bought out for all practical intensive purposes before some other cable operator could move in, all right? Now, Milbury is one other town that I know of that has, has three cable companies in it, okay? Uh, one is Charter and the other is Verizon, but that, um, that is basically because of the way that Milbury is situated, but at any rate. It's just one of these things that if we're going to get another cable operator to come into the town, um then, you know, we are going to openly draw some interest by um reaching out to these companies as the committee did ten years ago and um it's still, it was just good the way it was and Charter was the one that we wound up going with and if you look at the way that things are, Charter has one town outside of the city of Worcester and other towns outside of that circle belong to other companies, all right? So in other words, yes, other companies have been able to um do other towns and this sort of thing. And so it's going to be somewhat of a process for them to be able to move into simplified terms, Charter's donut bowl, to um take over that way. Now, I don't know what, what's going on with Charter and their plans for the future. I have so far about a dozen questions that I want to address to Charter regarding um what their plans are for Charter, what their plans are for the towns that they service. Um there's, there's, I have, I have quite a few questions here that are specifically pointed at things that um I think that we need to know as, as a cable committee and as a town.
Any other questions?
I'd like to ask a couple of them.
Sure.
John, thank you. Um so this is your third, this would be your third ten-year contract?
This is third, yes.
This is third. So Paul, last, last time in two thousand and fourteen, did you find a lot of additions or deletions to the existing contract? You did?
Yes, last time, I'll speak for Paul here.
Yes, last time, I'll speak for Paul here. Last time, the last contract is how we got this space created.
Okay.
That's how they funded it, because cable was housed in Charter's building. And when they kicked us out effectively, then part of that negotiation was the capital money that we could get to build this out. And we have a number of things on our lists of things we're looking to get from Charter. We'd love to move to high-def channels. We'd love to get the programming guide stuff online if we could, but we don't know what that's going to take, because it's not part of the current contract. So, yes, there are changes every time, and since I don't believe that we can impact the packages Charter sells to the residents of the town, but we can certainly collect, we'll collect information about what the residents think about it. So, there are many little things that will end up being changes to the contract.
Okay, so if you didn't get any response from other possible vendors, it's not just a matter of mirroring what you have as an extension. So, you do have additional features that you would like to talk about and discuss?
That is exactly correct.
And you have until December thirty-first of twenty-four?
Well, there is some question to exactly what the date is when the, that's why we're also pushing it now to start moving as quickly as we can. I've seen one date that says November one. I've seen November twenty-two-four. I've heard January one, twenty-two-four, so we need a little clarification on exactly what the date is.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you know, those are some of the opening points that we've got to, we've got to get answers for, and then, you know, start moving in from there. As Peter mentioned, you know, we have some things in mind that we're looking at to do, you know, high-def channels in town and other additions, and basically to get Charter's opinion on, you know, how they are servicing the town and why they are servicing the town the way they are. You know, I get complaints from Charter customers about service, and most of it has to do recently with Charter Internet, but, you know, there are, there are people who get ahold of us looking for information, you know, ideas, thoughts, and this sort of thing. I made notes along the way, which is where I've come up with this list of questions that I want to start asking Charter when we can get together with.
Okay, and I know I gave you the letters that we received recently in the office, in the town administrator's office, and also the ones that you stated that went back as far as October, so I did give you all those letters. Just wondering if you can give back to me contact information, and maybe the two or three of us can sit down and try to do this and try to make some connection.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
That's all.
So, what I would ask from the select board is a motion to delegate authority to negotiate Rutland's cable television licenses to the Cable Advisory Committee.
Should I move?
I do skip a jump right on that one. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Okay.
Y'all mind?
Wait, my eye.
And Nichols' eye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, goals and objectives, economic development, you know, plan for the new year. Did, was, have they had a meeting, Gary?
They had a meeting a week ago, Wednesday. They were supposed, I did talk to Mr. Jordan, because I wasn't available for their meeting, and he was, he was getting together and supposed to be forwarding me bullets of what they're looking for as far as help or assistance as far as economic development, so I have spoken with him.
Okay. I don't think there's anything new on the town website, and Carol is usually working on that. Boards and commissions, we made some appointments, and Tamika's working on a list, and we're going to do it as a full vote type thing. So, do they have any questions on any of that?
Actually, yeah, on the economic development plan, do one of us, or do we, are we involved in that, or how does that?
Typically, the town administrator just sits in on it. We made the appointments. You're certainly welcome to go to it, like, you know, the boards go.
You want to be on the board? I'll make a motion. Will you get on the board?
I would like to do it, yes.
Do you?
I will. I'll make a motion that.
I don't think there's any, there's any reason why a slow member can't be. Do we have a second?
I'll second. I just want to make sure that there's openings for the space, but I think also, yeah, I think that there was, because I remember for that committee, there were charges that were specific for the people that would be serving on it.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't remember off the top of my head what those positions were and which ones have been filled and which ones haven't.
Do you know where we stand on that?
If we just pull up the town's website real quick, it says next to it, because there was like, I think it was like a planning board representative, and I believe there's two vacancies, which Grace just filled one of them, if I remember correctly.
And I thought one was public servant.
Yeah, I have no problem. I just might have been wanting to make sure.
No, I know, we did want, but I thought the number was flexible. I thought like a minimum.
Yes.
Yeah, I thought it was like seventy-nine.
Yeah, I thought it was flexible.
So, it looks like there's a planning board designate that is vacant, and a community member at large that doesn't fit to vacant, which I assume Grace was the community at large?
Yes.
Grace would be a community.
Yeah, so then it would just be according to this planning board, but I, I mean, I don't have any issue with it.
But I don't believe that the board specified in their motion that it had to be specific.
Well, I thought they wanted that, and then it was flexible. Did you have some input?
Actually, I had something else, a different board after. Don't want to confuse this.
So, I mean, because it does say that we have a select board designate, and we filled that with Tracy Sasseville as select board.
Tracy who?
So.
Sasseville was our select board designate.
Yeah, the bank, from the bank.
Oh, the front bank.
No, that she, Jessica Johnson's from the bank.
Oh, okay.
No, but Jessica Johnson is not a town resident, so she's like a ad hoc.
Ad hoc.
Ad hoc.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Yeah, I know what you're, you know, I can't.
You don't know where. Like, at large? Yes.
Large, isn't it?
Yes, yes, thank you.
So, I guess my suggestion would go to, would be go to a meeting, because you've got to get support from the board. They may not want you.
Okay.
Usually it will come with a recommendation, you know, you send a letter of interest with the board's recommendation, and then Tamika, in the meantime, would just, if we can just make sure we check on the guidelines. I thought it was pretty flexible. We did want specific groups, you know, individuals representing certain areas, but I didn't think it was only down, and I thought there was some kind of a range. But yeah, Tom, if you can just, Gary, if you can find out when the next meeting is and let Tom know, would you even go and then talk to them about your interest?
Thank you.
And I think Randy Jordan is the chair of that committee, so you can wait till you say.
I'll recheck for him, yeah.
And then, once that's all set, then we would just come down to the board for a vote to appoint you on the committee, so. Any other questions on any of that? All right, human resources, Gary already talked about the position at the town administrators, and budget and financial futures. Who you got, Karen?
We have a police department that's poorly underfunded, and we don't have enough space, and all that other stuff, so.
You'll take care of that next year.
Sure, we'll do our best.
I know, if I may, I know we have kind of talked about it unofficially, kind of starting now, getting together a group to look at finances realistically and see kind of what we need, because we can continue the budget cuts that we've been doing and just slashing our departments, and that's getting us where we are now and going to continue, or we need to have realistic conversations as how we're going to raise revenue to be able to fully fund our departments as they should be for a town this size, and so I would rather start that conversation now than kind of getting into budget season and then adding that conversation on top of budget season.
And I think that was kind of the intent of when we had put this on our goals and objectives, and in light of the, one of our major departments having a shortfall, I think that would be a good idea for us to take a look at what's going on.
And I think we've heard from GPW all along that they've been limping along kind of all year with staffing and, you know, repairs to equipment and everything, so it's two big, you know, two big departments, and all the others we know are also hurting, so.
It's every department.
Right.
So, yeah, once the chair comes back, we can start trying to.
Will she be back?
We should probably maybe schedule some off meetings to have some, you know, discussions as long as the board's amenable to that, but we'll bring that up when Carol returns. We'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting, which she'll be back for. Anything else? Okay, so.
What did Peter cry about, you know?
Oh, yeah, Peter said, well, it wasn't that important, he left. Peter, did you have anything? Are you over there? Because we're going to go to executive session, so now or forever, hold your peace. All right, all right, so I assume if he can hear us, he would come and tell us.
Just ignore us, that's all.
So, if I can have a motion to go into executive session for, session for reason number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the government's bargaining and litigating position. Discuss union contract negotiations and approval of ex, executive session minutes from April fourth and April eleventh, and to not come back, not return into open session.
Should I move?
Wait a second.
Any other discussions? Roll call.
Okay.
Y'all mind?
Wait, my eye.
And Nichols' eye. Thank you.